So there were a couple others that were related to that.
This is the one that made it the first.
And how about the minimum lots size bills? Did those make their way through?
I don't recall those. I'll get you an answer on that.
The lot size ones, right. But there were two other for ADUs that had been put together. So this is the only one that came through on ADUs.
Yeah, this one made it out of committee and was set for.
So we just need to understand what certain ways means.
But the legislature is still working on these issues and they still can be passed and still can be signed.
Oh, sure.
Yeah. So just because the legislature stopped, there's a process, right? It's my understanding. Yeah, it's on the calendar. So.
And Mayor, just to let you and the council member and the guest here know that TML is putting on, they do their quarterly meeting that's going to be held in Zanger. That's going to talk about all the legislation updates. So that's going to be held on June 18th from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And there's a flyer at your seat. So it gives the address and location of where that meeting is going to be held.
And that's all I have. If y'all have any questions about bills you've heard about or.
I appreciate that. And we'll have that TML meeting. We'll put that on a note on the website and stuff. So people can just click on it and they get a link to it to be able to find it should they want to attend. Okay, please Chief. You got anything for us tonight?
So these stats are for the month of May. We only had about 19 calls for service, about 114 citations. That includes both warnings and regular citations. We're seeing trending. We had a theft of service, a theft and a fraud. A lot of those appear to be kind of scam based as opposed to like somebody taking somebody's lawnmower out of their yard. So please keep watching your personal accounts and your credit reports to make sure nobody's accessing your personal information. Part of the reason for the kind of the decline in calls for service, Officer Weisinger and I were both gone for training. He completed successfully the firearms instructor course. And I was doing the first responder medical instructor course. That just means I can teach the officers how to do a little bit of trial medicine. But by all means, we need the firefighters and EMS to respond for major things. Also, our reserve officer, David Rosenthal, completed both his intermediate and advanced certifications for his license. So that's a pretty good achievement on his part. Again, feel free to contact us. You see something suspicious, call us. I'd much rather come out for something that's nothing than someone go, well, I won't worry about it. No, by all means, call us. We'll check it out.
Right. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Chris, you're next on the list.
Nothing really to add beyond the engineering report that's included. If you had any questions.
Not for me.
Evening, Mayor, Councilman.
Thank you for having me here, our chief, Ditt County SD. So just real quick, one I want to first apologize, the month of report, we found a couple of them. Just takes we had to fix on it. So it will be out tomorrow. So you usually get that usually within the first 10 days of the month. We get that out to you. The biggest news we had, a lot of questions about, we had a fire at the Kroger on Friday. It was shut down for about six, seven hours. Had a small fire, one of the coolers for right there by the cashier, the drinks. It was a small fire, but it made a huge mess. Kroger had a team, response team come out to clean. As you can imagine, we called DFW. That's a big, huge van. It's on a vehicle. We had to blow all the smoke out. So it was a very long operation, but it was very, a lot of cooperation from all the towns. And of course, Towne Bartonville itself. But so anyway, just that is, it opened up a lot quicker than I thought. But they had, they had Republic from Way Services out there. I mean, so they have like a protocol, I guess. When something like this happens. So their regional team showed up. So I'm sure time is money. And so they went to a lot of to get the store back open. So the biggest concern obviously is it also has a pharmacy. So you can imagine with a lot of people coming up, right? But their prescription fails. So we were working on trying to help them. And so it all worked out, but just goes to show you, you know, one little small fire can cause a huge mess. So other than that, big news for us is we did finally get the final virtual inspection of the new ambulance. You know, as you recall, we were supposed to get the new ambulance back in February. It was delayed, delayed. And so we've seen the final inspection. It is supposed to be here. We've been promised, you know, we've made several promises. But by the end of June, and then once we get it, it'll take us two to three weeks to get all the equipment installed on it. And then it'll be, of course, it's going to be at the new station, at Station 513 on Copper Canyon Road. And so we look forward to having that and we'll do a big, you know, ceremony for once it gets here. But we're excited about that. As I've reported previously, we are running the ambulance. So just using a loaner ambulance that the manufacturer had provided for us. But it will be nice to actually get the ambulance itself. So. Last month I reported, we had a huge success for the carryload event and it was a big turnout there. But I was in between the fall, the next weekend, we also did a thing for Memorial, on Memorial Day. And that was our blood draw. We do two blood drops a year. We had, it's just a short window that we do it, but it's just a nice way to give back and save a life. We had 22 resistancements, which equates to about 66 lives saved. So it was a good turnout for just a short time. We have other activities coming up. We're getting into the summer science series. So we've got that coming up. We do our weather. We rotate that around each year. There's only one day for that. That'll be June 23rd, Station 513. Electricity, the one where the co-serve comes out and do a big demonstration for all the kids about electricity. They get the electric to the hot dogs. But that'll be at Station 513 on June 27th. And then the big one, and this one just blows me away. I don't like it, but it's a snake. So we do the thing, the snake handler goes and all the kids love it. But that's on June 30th and that'll be at 6:00 PM at Station 513. And then we do our junior firefighter camp in July. That's for all the kids. We'll start, we'll, we try to spread those invitations out because we don't mix up the two. So that'll be coming out. But I can tell you, that'll be on July 7th, 8th and 12th. And July 8th is actually Station 513. And of course, we already started preparation. We've worked with Troy on all the July 4th activities. You can imagine, we do a lot of activities. We look forward to being y'all's parade and we get to participate and come here and get a free hamburger and so look forward to that. So thanks to Troy and his staff, work with us and trying to help keep us aligned. So we have, actually have a kind of like a preparation command. I mean, just going to all the fourth of July activities. Of course, we had to prepare for the grass fires that goes along with that. But it's an exciting time of the year if we celebrate our country birthday. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Did anybody get hurt in Kroger, the fire or anything like that?
There was an employee that did get a kind of some smoke inhalation. Actually, they were trained to put out the fire. It was actual fire. I mean, it was learning pretty good. It built up the whole thing with smoke. So yeah, the patient was treated on scene, but then they did not go to hospital.
Good.
So you would have been impressed with Chief Vaughn and his team during the carry the load walk?
Oh, yeah.
I was behind you. You were in full bunker gear with your tanks and your helmet. The only thing out of regulation, your tennis shoes.
I did wear tennis shoes.
He wasn't had 80 pounds of gear on. I was impressed that you guys finished that walk. Some of the guys had hoses.
They were quite, yeah, they were, they were.
I questioned my sanity. I was like, what am I doing?
You're saying this is your last year you're doing it? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I say that, but the young guns always pressure me into doing it. You gotta lead by example is what I'm telling myself. But while I'm out there walking. Lead by example. I believe I didn't stay back.
Shorten, shorten your trip a little bit.
Yeah, there you go. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Then Mayor, I got a few development highlights as well. So Copper Knolls Estates, they're still bringing in some dirt. You may have noticed some additional rocks that were delivered to that site. They're moving their construction entrance so that they can complete the entryway into that development. But they still have the fencing to put up, the gates, the landscaping. So they're, they're still working. And the weather has hindered them a little bit. And so that's the activity that's going on there at Copper Knolls Estates. Jernigan Estates, the asphalt patch that they put on Jernigan, we haven't finalized that yet. So they have not received their final acceptance. There were some issues with how that was installed. Quarter Horse, we are waiting for the downstream assessment study to be returned to the town for review before that plat would come back to the council. Oni Ranch final plat is here tonight for y'all's consideration as well. And then we have a minor plat that'll be approved by staff, which is a property across the street from Town Hall. It's about 7.8 acres and they just want to divide it into three different lots. But that is the development update. As far as upcoming events, as you all participated in the workshop on Friday, it was a training session for the council. We had an attorney here that kind of walked them through what they can expect as a new council member. It was about a two hour, two hour training, which went very well. So had some for you guys to take it the time to do that. We have a planning and zoning meeting on the 16th if we get information in that would create that agenda. But as of now, we do not. On June 19th, Town Hall typically would be closed. But we have our third Thursday of the month is typically our court docket. And so we're going to have the office will be open that day for court. So that folks don't come in and say, well, the offices were closed, so I didn't want to make it in for court. So we're going to, our court clerk administrator will be here along with the judge and the prosecutors and everything that goes along with that. So our court will be operational on the 19th. We have a second meeting scheduled for June 23rd as well. So mark your calendar there and then also the parade on July 4th. And that is all I've got.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate it. Next item, consent on the minutes from the previous meeting, May 12th meeting. Such as considered for approval for by a single motion of vote generally without discussion. So we have the minutes from the 12th meeting in front of us here. I'll take a motion to accept the minutes as written.
I actually have one question on the consent agenda. It talks about Town Council Place 3, the canvassing. It talks about that the person is duly elected to complete a two-year term for staff. That's me. But does that need to be changed? Because actually, isn't my term and aren't I working off an expired term? So but it'd be one year? Yeah. I mean, I just don't want it to go into the record. And then if I have to, you know, let's say I run again next year. Because it says here.
What page are you on there?
Page six. Of the consent agenda.
Consent agenda, the minutes from May 12th meeting.
Town Council Place.
Right there.
Yeah, it says two-year term.
The middle paragraph for a two-year term.
It doesn't talk about that. I'm just saying, it says hereby declared duly elected is shown below to complete a two-year term.
To complete a two-year term.
Subject to taking the oath. Actually, it would be.
You're completing the two-year term though.
The remainder of the two.
Okay. I just want to clarify that.
Portion of the two-year term.
I think we need our lawyer to figure that one out. Lawyer, what do you think about that?
I just need to know which place is it.
It's Place 3.
Place 3.
So Place 3, it's normal election cycle, but the next May.
Yes. So she's just completing the two-year term, one year of it.
I just wanted to make sure.
Good. That's lawyer talk for confusing everybody. Okay, thank you. Any other questions about the agenda and the meeting minutes on that? Okay. I will take a recognition to accept the meeting minutes from May 12th. Consent on those. A motion?
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
And any other discussion necessary to consent though? Okay, very good. I'll take a vote, please, on the accepting that minutes for the council meeting.
Aye.
Unanimous, and that's been accepted then. Thank you. Moving on to action and discussion items, part two. Considering appointing Mayor Pro Tem and Deputy Mayor Pro Tem. So these are appointments done by the mayor and then accepted by voted on by the town council. And I've asked, and she's accepted to accept, Victoria Hubbard to be Mayor Pro Tem. She has a great background as far as on being other boards and prior to being Copper Canyon. And she's on the HOA of her, out in Copper Creek Estates. And very, also on various other boards around here. So I think she's a good pick for being Mayor Pro Tem. So I'll take a motion or vote, please, on appointing Victoria Hubbard to Mayor Pro Tem for Copper Canyon.
I make a motion for the action regarding appointing Victoria Hubbard for Jeopardy Mayor Pro Tem.
Second?
I'll take.
Go ahead.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Sorry. Oh, oh, we're doing Mayor Pro Tem. Sorry. I apologize. Mayor Pro Tem.
Yep.
I'm in the wrong order.
You have a second already? So let's have a vote. The remaining members? Yeah, may I have a second? I'll take a vote on appointing Victoria as the Mayor Pro Tem.
Aye.
And that's unanimous?
Vote for yourself.
Yep. And that's unanimous. Very good. Thank you. And now Deputy Mayor Pro Tem, I'm going to pick, I would like to select Chase Lieber. He said he will accept the position. I think he's good, brings some background to us that we need. And I'm glad that he decided to accept the position. So I'll take a motion, please, to appoint him.
I make a motion that we approve Councilmember Chase Lieber as Deputy Mayor Pro Tem.
There we go. And any discussion on that after that now? And please a vote on appointing Lieber?
Lieber.
Lieber? We'll have Chase leave for anyways, as Deputy Mayor Pro Tem.
Aye.
And that's unanimous. Thank you. Appreciate that. Discussion, take action on 2508, which is. Designating the mayor, town administrator, town secretary authorizing bank account signatures. I'll read the resolution. The resolution of Town Council of the Copper Canyon. The designating the mayor, town administrator, town secretary has the authorized bank account signatures for the Copper Canyon Bank Accounts at South State Bank and providing an effective date. Now, the reason we're having to go through this, do this process is we've changed banks for our accounts and things like that. So we just have to get signature cards and authorizations to withdraw money and pay bills and those kinds of things. So that's what this is all about. I will take a motion to discuss or accept 2508 resolution for the town of Copper Canyon.
I make a motion to accept Resolution 2508, recognizing the mayor, town administrator and the town secretary as authorized bank account signatures.
Any discussion?
No.
Nope.
Aye.
All right. Let's take a vote. Will you please take a vote on that resolution?
We're learning, everyone.
There we are. Vote on that resolution?
Aye.
And that's unanimous. Thanks for almost as bad as lawyers. Just kidding. That's a go. Next consideration on interlocal cooperative agreement, property tax assessment and collection, Denton County taxes. Troy knows more about this than I do. If there's any discussion that Troy might want to lead us into on this issue?
So yeah, just some background, Mayor and Council. As you guys know, the county provides a lot of information and collects all of our property tax. A lot of large cities do that on their own. So a part of that service, the county will bill that. So if you look on the monthly performa, you'll see in the, in the finances that we submit to you guys each month, there'll be a line item for county fees. And so those fees have gone up. They haven't seen an increase since 2019, I believe. And that would include everything from postage to copy paper, the whole deal. So they're asking for an increase of about a dollar 41, if I'm not mistaken. And it used to just be right at a dollar. So that's what this is about, is for the county to provide those services to us. Parcels in Copper Canyon?
Yeah.
I can look, I could look and get back with you on that, give you the exact number.
Can you explain to us newbies per parcel? What is the parcel? I mean, how is that broken down? Paid a dollar 41 per parcel? What's, what is?
So I think it's just, it's, it's per taxable lot.
Okay.
Is from what I understand how that works. So it's per taxable lot.
Okay. I'll take a resolution or a motion to accept the interlocal cooperative agreement for property tax assessment with Denton County.
I'll make a motion that we accept the interlocal agreement between Denton County and Copper Canyon for tax assessment.
And second? Anybody? Seconded by Chase. I think we discussed it already. And it's really is a minor increase, but they haven't had one, as Troy said, since 2018. So it makes sense to, you know, cost of living has gone up as we all know. Paper costs up 51%, it says. Anyway, so I'll take a, please a vote on that resolution with the interlocal agreement.
Aye.
That's accepted. Okay. Next item. Discuss and take action on ordinance 25005. The next thing, land generally described as 0.13 acres, lot X, block eight, located in Copper Creek Estates. Ma'am?
As I live in the subdivision, and I am also a member of the Board of Directors, I'm going to abstain and I'm going to remove myself.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. So that's very good. Okay, we will. Okay. So this piece of property is a, is a small segment, 0.13 acres that attaches between what's called now Phase 3 of Copper Creek Estates and Phase 1 and Phase 2 of Copper Creek Estates, which is an HOA over on the west side of town for people who don't know. That's the explanation. Let's, Troy, I'll take a motion to open up the discussion on this item.
Well, Troy, when we had our workshop, you explained it to us very succinctly. And maybe you just might let me just tell them or show the exhibit because it's in our packet.
Sure.
And, you know, some people were like, one-third acre, it sounds like a lot, but when you look at it on paper, it's a small strip.
And it's 0.13 acres.
Yeah, it's 0.13.
Even smaller than that.
Yeah. And so, so this property, as the mayor alluded to, as many, many of you may know, we, the Phase 3 of Copper Canyon Estate used to be in our ETJ. We released that and the developer is now working through the county to get all of his plats approved, which he has. And then as part of that plat approval, there was two lots or on that current plat that was approved, there was one lot that was just under, or right at two acres. And in order for him to make two lots out of that, he needed this small sliver of land that crossed over into the town of Copper Canyon. And as the mayor alluded to, it's a bar ditch. It would go from the town limits to the edge of pavement, which is a HOA lot that he, he monitors and maintains. And so according to our attorneys, since it's such a small sliver, it's not a large piece. There's really no reason for us to deny it. And I'll let Matt give some details around that. But that's basically, it's the, it's a bar ditch that's about 30 feet wide and about 300 and something feet long. It's just a drainage easement, but it helps with the developer to create two additional lots in his Phase 3.
Is there a financial transaction involved with this?
No. No.
Mike, do you have any comments? Do you want to say anything?
All the way up here, I do, I've been trying to think of a way that I could say this in like in the open, on the, you know, open record. It is my recommendation and it's Stan Lowery's recommendation that you approve it. Yeah, I'm happy to talk about it in a little more detail if the mayor wants to go into executive session. But, you know, and which we can do because it's posted on the agenda to discussion with legal counsel.
Right. Well, let's, we'll see how the discussion goes here for a little bit. If we need any more advice, we'll, we'll close up and go to executive if we need to. But I want to make the point that Copper Creek Estates has had an agreement since 2016, which was worked out with the town when they built that HOA there. And this does not violate any of the agreements of the 2016. Is anybody from the management team of Copper Creek Estates in the audience at all? I don't even know. So you, yeah, please state your name when you come up, please, and what your job title is.
My name is Jay Rising. I'm with McAdams. I'm not on the HOA, but I'm here representing the developer for this.
Okay.
We're the design engineer on the project. So just here to answer any questions.
So all your, so this, you're maintaining all the parts of the agreement from 2016 on through now today, all through your phases, development and things like that. So.
That's correct. Like Troy said, it's a strip of land next to, next to a road that's between the property line and the road. It's just an unused strip of land. And now it'll just be incorporated into two front yards. The drainage will stay the same. Everything will be the same. It'll just be part of a lot instead of a open.
And to be clear, it doesn't affect this piece of property, a changing title on it or whatever. It doesn't affect anybody in Copper Creek Estates. Doesn't affect the houses on the other side of Kyle Lane. I've looked at it personally, myself too, as a lot of us all have, I'm sure. And so, you know, I don't see any big reason for that, but it allows him to complete two lots out there to build two houses where he needed at least one acre lots for the, the bed counties requirements.
Correct. Yeah, it doesn't affect anything within the existing Phase 1.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay. Well, I would like to take a motion. If there are any other discussions from council members?
I just would like to know, would it be beneficial for me to understand? Because this is not the first time that there has been disanexation, you know, presented from this particular developer to understand any of that in terms of what is happening right now. Because I am new and I don't understand why this was not prevented. And we're in this situation now again. And when we have a situation, I understand that we have to approve what is legally before us, if that is what is necessary. But I want to, because I am new and putting this vote forth, that I understand that we're not opening up other situations in which a developer has not thought through what he needs to do. And, and we are simply forced kind of into this corner. And so I want to have had that discussion and say, well, here we are. And now we have to do this because this is what's legally done. And now we have to be at this place where we're having this vote. Can we pause for a second and just say, you know, give me some history, give me some understanding. And yes, while under duress, maybe I might have to vote what is legally. Help me here.
So Matt, if you can kind of explain the difference between releasing of the ETJ and what we're doing here on this particular item. Because, because Janae, I think that's the difference. You know, we, we released the ETJ.
Right.
Because the request was made for the 46 some odd acres. And so I think that's one piece of what we've got to follow as it relates to state regulations and laws and requirements. And then there's this piece that we're considering tonight. So I'll let Matt kind of give a difference between those two.
So the council's actually not legally required to accept the petition for disannexation. Okay. From Stan, in my standpoint, this is such a small sliver of land. The consequences of not approving it may be more severe than, than approving it. And so that, that's why we recommend it.
I'll tell you what, let's, let's take your advice. Let's go to, if you don't mind, we'll go to executive session for a little bit. We can answer your question probably better in depth on a one-on-one basis and, and things. That's been more than just a few minutes. I hope to discuss that and stuff. I think that's probably the best thing to do.
Okay. Then I can go ahead and read us into the executive session if you like, Mayor.
I'm sorry, bud.
I can read us into executive session that they took, you know, that's helpful. That's the way that, you know, we, we get it started and.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. Yeah. So we have to adjourn the meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we stay in here?
No.
Okay. The time is now 7:53. The council will adjourn to closed session pursuant to 551.071 of the local government code to discuss item number. to discuss item number five, item number five on the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Sheila?
Yes.
You're probably going to hear about it from later in the conference.
The time is now 8:07. The council has reconvened in open session, and no action was taken.
Okay, very good, thank you, we learned a little bit in there. I'm going to wait for one of our council members to return real quick. Okay, so we're still dealing with ordinance 2505, deannexation of the land with .13 acres. I'll take a, I'll take a motion to approve the deannexation of the .13 lot 5X, block eight, located in Copper Creek.
I'll make a motion to approve the deannexation of the .13 acres. I'll second.
That's been seconded. Any other further discussion on it at all that we need to do, of course? Okay, very good, I think we all had our questions answered that were necessary. And let's have a vote, please, on the acceptance of the ordinance for the deannexation of that property.
Aye.
Aye.
And that's a unanimous by four, with one, however you record that, extension. All right, thank you very much, that closes that one. Next item then would be the discussion with that same piece of property, .13, releasing a certain property from the ETJ. So that actually, we did, just there, moved it from Copper Canyon to our ETJ. And now we're going to remove it from the ETJ and back over to Dead County, so it can be absorbed into the project that's Phase Three, really, of Copper Creek Estates. So we're going to consider resolution 2509 now, please, releasing certain property from the extratorial jurisdiction of common Copper Canyon for approximately .13 acres of real property owned by Copper Creek Phase Three LP as requested. I'll open up discussion, or I'll open up accepting that release of the property, .13, block five X.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Since this, this property was a common property within the HOA of Phase One and Phase Two, do we have a document from the HOA Board of Phase One and Phase Two approving these steps?
I don't know about that question, and I'll make this point. The man asking the question is Jeff Hubbard, and he lives in the Copper Creek Estates. So I'll make sure everybody's clear on that, he has an interest in the issue here. Matt, do we need that?
What exactly is the question? I'm not sure.
Jeff, would you come up and ask the questions if you have, to make sure we're clear?
So, there's an HOA Board. This was a HOA lot. 5X was part of Copper Creek Phase One, Phase Two, and designated as an HOA lot on the plat. There is an HOA Board made up of three members, the developer, the developer's secretary, and one of our council members. Before these actions have been taken or requested of this council, has there been a document presented where the HOA Board approved this action? And was it done in an open meeting, as may be required under the Texas Property Code?
So, I'm not, I'm not sure whether that information was provided, and I'm not familiar enough with the statute that you're referring to, and I'd be happy to look at it if you provide it to me. But as far as I know, I, I don't think that the town council needs permission. From the HOA.
Yeah, but does the developer who is asking for this need permission from the HOA? Even if it's just from a statutory perspective, to paper this properly?
Didn't you say the developer's the HOA Board?
The developer is two-thirds of the HOA.
Two-thirds, yes. They're the ones that are making this request.
Right.
So I assume that they have approval from them. If they're making the request of this.
But do we know that?
I don't have an answer for you.
If that's the case, then what he is suggesting means that we would need to have not voted on what we did and tabled this issue until this, the question is answered, even if. until this question is answered, even if the end result is what happens. He's presenting something that is bringing into question something that needs to be looked into and answered.
I guess another question, the attorney of the, this council held liable or responsible for an HOA document?
I can't answer that.
And please understand, I'm actually, I have no problem with this from a, an actual activity perspective. I just wanna make sure it's papered properly.
I just, from my understanding, and tell me if I'm wrong, there has been such volatility between that neighborhood and the HOA process. And there has been such threats of lawsuits between them that I do not want to be involved in that.
Right. I, the information I had was that it was not HOA property. So that, that's what I'm, that's what I'm going on. And, and I think at this point, we can move forward. You know, we've already voted on the item, and we can go back and, and research it. But I, I don't think that there's a legal issue here that, that we need to be concerned about right now.
The sliver was not in the HOA.
That, that was the, that's what I was.
It originally was. Five, five X is designated a, yes, is designated an HOA property. That is a common property owned by, or we'll still say owned by. But it is an asset of the HOA. So the HOA is effectively agreeing to give that asset up for no consideration.
This is the semantics, but isn't the developer the HOA?
Right.
It's two thirds of it.
So I, I'll say this, based on the information that I was given, that the town was given, I don't think there's any legal issue for the town. What you're talking about really is more of a property owner to property owner civil issue.
Okay. Okay. I just wanted to bring that up and make sure everybody's on the same page.
Yeah. And I, I mean, I believe that the, and we all know the HOA Board, two thirds of it is the people who are presenting this request.
Right.
So I assume that they, they approve their own request. I mean, that would be the assumption.
Well, in, in theory, though, you would have to have an HOA Board meeting to do that, right? Even if it was two to one. I do not believe there's been an HOA Board meeting to approve this request.
Yeah, I think that ends up being a civil fight matter, as our lawyer has said, so.
Okay. That's okay. Like I said, I don't have a problem with the, the actual transfer. I just wanna make sure it's papered right.
Yeah.
Because we need to do things according to the rules, and some people don't always follow rules. That's, it's arbitrary, right? Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. Well, let's consider, we've already passed the twenty five oh five resolution. Twenty five oh nine regarding changing it from the, removing it from the ETJ. I'll take a motion to table twenty five oh nine, removing it from the ETJ until we can verify the HOA release of the property out of the ETJ, unless that's not allowed to do.
So there's some timing issues that we have to look at.
Okay.
Because, I'm not gonna say, petitions for the ETJ. I just wanted to, from the vote that just happened, we made it, it's just now ETJ. About the table, would be legally appropriated, but of course, that's up to the council.
And we will be tabling it to find out if the HOA has approved it. But really, we can't keep track of all the HOAs in town and what they do in meetings. So I think it's going to table it.
All right, you know, I agree with you, Chase. You're absolutely right. I think we just take a vote on this twenty five oh nine resolution to remove from the ETJ. Just, because it's gonna end up there that way, one way or the other, and stuff, so. With our attorney's approval, I'll take a vote on the, let's take a recommendation for acceptance of the twenty five oh nine, releasing the attorney, the property from the extratorial jurisdiction of Copper Canyon. Take a motion to accept that resolution.
Make a motion to accept twenty five oh nine, releasing the point one three acres from the ETJ.
A second.
And we have discussion on, any other discussion on it? Okay.
I mean, I will just say that I understand where you are in wanting to, I, I understand all of the points. I just feel uncomfortable with the situation, so.
And that's totally understandable.
I just wanna put that out there.
I'll take a motion for a vote then on twenty five oh nine, releasing the property from the ETJ.
I'm, I'm uncomfortable, so. I'm uncomfortable. I'm unsure. I'm gonna abstain.
I have a question about abstaining.
Can't abstain.
Is that a vote for or against?
It's a vote for now.
Okay, so it's good. That's, so twenty five oh nine passes by a vote of three, four, and one against, one abstention, releasing the property from the ETJ. Next item we're gonna discuss is take action recommendation for the plat of Oni Ranch Final Plat.
Can we bring Victoria back?
Oh, yeah, Victoria. Final plant allowing development of fifty five point seven acres and allow development of twin, twenty two acre, single family lots, two acres each, and one gas well site, five point two six two acres located at one thirteen, thirteen thirteen Copper Canyon Road, Argyle, Texas. It's Copper Canyon, Texas, seven six two two six. And I'll take a motion to open discussion on that plat. We have it in front of us. And is there a representative here for Oni Ranch anywhere that would like to present themselves to answer questions?
I'll, we go for discussion?
In your name, sir?
I'm Davis Siciliano, one seven nine four three Windflower Way, Siciliano Developments. We developed Williams Ranch on Justin Road, if you're familiar with that. This is another development that we'd like to, I think this would be a very high-end, nice development that we'd like to make happen that we're trying to pattern after Quiet Hill next door to the north. Quiet Hill is directly to the north. We're trying to bring the same environment that's in Quiet Hill here. It's already zoned for two acre lots. All these are two acre lots. The gas well site has been producing since two thousand and eight. The gas has come down tremendously. We're keeping the site separate. As you'll see, the five acre site. What happens on that site is you won't hear anything, you won't smell anything, it's just a producing well. The gas flows into a pipeline on the east side of our property that ET has, energy transfer. This, the odor is added by the midstream provider downstream. It's not added onsite, so there's no odor. We have a pickup truck go in there a couple times a day to service it. And once in a while, a truck will go in to get water because they separate the gas from the water vapor onsite. So it's pretty, pretty innocuous. And the Onis are here. If you want to ask them any questions, Janet Oni was on P and Z. Janet Oni was on the upper Trinity Board, and they've lived there over, over ten years, yeah. If you wanna ask them anything there. I'd like to make a couple comments if I can, and then ask questions if it's all right. This is a final plat. This is not zoning. There's very little discretion, very little discretion here. The town has ordinances, the state has ordinances. If we comply with all the requirements, council is obligated to approve. So this isn't something where we get into a lot of judgment. No, I'll say, I'll, we'll quote it if you want, you know. It says must approve if we meet all the requirements. And our attorneys here, if you'd like to know the statute. It is a private development. There's no public infrastructure being put in here. This is a completely private development on private property. So that's another thing to consider when you look at what we do. We provided elevations. I don't know if we've provided them to council. We provided them in the past where we showed the elevation. It's taken off of Quiet Hill's elevation and may be updated. The, we provided the town with their future, we provided for the land to be there for their acquisition or future right of way. The home pads shown on here are not where the homes will be. The home pads were, the town engineer asked us to put where the homes could fit on the lot, meeting all the setback requirements. It's a custom builder, and I mean, he'll walk out there with his client, and the client will decide where to put the house. So we'll put in the streets, we'll put in the water, we'll put in the electric and gas. There'll be detention, there'll be drainage. But the home builder will go actually and improve, do all the improvements on the lot. We won't do that. We don't deal with home buyers, or what we call a horizontal developer. We put the lots and infrastructure in. We sell the finished lots to a home builder. So we don't know who the home builder is gonna ever sell the lots to. They're a custom builder, as I said. The gas well on the side, I think I've, I've kinda described. I'd like to make, say, one other small thing, if you wouldn't mind, and then just answer questions. We, we create a tremendous amount of value, and I don't know if people understand how much value we create. So I'm gonna go back to Williams Ranch. And if you knew Ms. Williams, you know, her husband had passed away. She was trying to maintain her ranch. She didn't wanna maintain it anymore, so she wanted to sell. And she tried several ways to sell, and she came to us finally, and we worked with her for three years to make that happen. There was an abandoned house on there. The Shacklefords were tremendously upset that you had homeless people going in there. We had, you know, kids going in there and creating mischief. We had people hunting on there. It was basically vacant. That home, that tract, was valued for a million thirty one thousand dollars when we bought it. It was twenty acres. All but four acres was an ag. They had an ag exemption. So you can, you can figure out how much they paid in taxes. It was less than ten thousand dollars a year. Okay? When we went in there and bought it, and this is public record now, so I can say it, I couldn't say it when we did it, we paid three and a half million dollars, and we paid three years of back taxes on what the past value had been. So we paid a tremendous amount of taxes, and the value had gone up three and a half times. I would say this year, we started selling lots last May, there are thirty lots. We've sold twenty five of those lots. Those lots have homes going on them by Toll Brothers. This year, the value will be around six million seven fifty. It's over six times increase in value. We'll have homes there, thirty homes, that are valued on an average of a million and a half dollars each when Toll Brothers finished. That means there'll be forty five million dollars in property values there. So a lot of people just don't understand. They see we make a mess. They see we have to go through a lot of approvals. And when it's done, you know, they don't see the value. Some people don't see all the value we've created. So I just wanted to point that out.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Siciliano. I'll say this, yeah, we see that all the time, and you do build projects and houses and stuff like that. But we're also here to protect our town too, and protect our citizens, the current ones that live here. So, but the project we're talking about now is not Williams Ranch, it's Oni Ranch. So I'd like to ask, do our, any council members have any questions that they'd like to ask on the project?
I just, I just like to say that they've been in front of P and Z several times.
Yes.
When I've been up there, and they've complied with everything we've discussed. And Chris, if I recall, the last moving piece was there were a couple lots that were like one point nine nine nine, whatever. But they went back and did a straight two. So that's, I, I looked in, I looked like that's all cleaned up. And I also wanna reference that there was another developer prior, Sweet Cow, that came in and wanted us to rezone one, and we said no. Right? So we're, we're sticking two to the, the two acre, and they were very cooperative with Williams Ranch, by the way, also. So I think we're working with.
Yes, absolutely. So we, we appreciate, I mean, your redesign to get those two acre lots in there, like, and it is a transition, of course, from previous councils to where we're at today. So the, you know, I'm not gonna say my thought right now on, on the project, but anyway, see if any other council members have a, any questions.
So the only question I have is, have you already decided on the builders? And if so, how many builders?
Yes, but, but it's not a condition of plat approval.
No, 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 no. I'm just trying to figure out.
Yes, we have.
One bill, are you gonna have just one builder?
Right now, we have one builder that has all the lots under contract, and it's not Toll Brothers.
Okay.
And we've actually shared that with Troy. I mean, he can share that with you. But that's not supposed to be a, a condition of plat approval.
Okay. I have a question for Chris. Can you help me with the, on the engineering design manual appendix where you have him fill out, you know, the different checklists? And it talks about the plat application, like where it talks, should I be asking you the question, or should I be asking you, Troy?
Engineer-related, Chris.
Okay, okay. And so for the different places, I think it's, I took it out, sorry, I have a lot of paperwork here. I apologize. I don't even know where it was. I think it's like on C, I'll reference this page, give me one second. In some of the areas where it says no, some of them were like not applicable. For instance, like C eleven, like underwater, where it says the horizontal scale for Plan B shall be at least one inches equalling twenty foot on full-size drawings. That wasn't one of the ones that really like concerned me as much. But can you explain to me, just because I'm new, why that might be checked no and not yes?
So you're talking about item eleven on which sheet?
On C, on C eleven.
C eleven, okay.
It's number two. I think there are several more that have been checked no. One that's more important is like grading. Let's go to C nine. On number one, it says, oh no, that's still horizontal scale. Sorry, I had it written down, and then I apologize, there's been a lot going on. These are just scale drawings that were no, but I was more concerned about, if anyone else sees a no touch, that would be hopeful. But what, what would be the reason that that would not be required?
So the, on C eleven, item one, so, so, and this is actually a really good question because the checklist is severely outdated. It's actually one of the things that we've just entered contract with the town to update. Specifically, that water one references Bartonville Water Supply, as opposed to Cross Timbers, which is what it's named now. And, and so some of these are outdated. What, what also is important is since the town has decoupled the plating process from final construction plans, there are some checks in this document that are under the engineering part that are out of date. One of those is related to retaining walls. And so there's a few in here that as the final construction plans get approved, this will be updated for record with the town of the final decision on some of these items.
Okay, okay. And then, so like if I ask on C five, where it says that the certificate showing that all taxes have been paid, that's because, that would be more of a town attorney question, is, or, I mean, a town administrator question, because why?
Because, because that process, the ordinance falls under the town secretary's review and checks to make sure all the taxes have been paid, and so we do that process.
When does that occur?
So those documents are in the, in your.
It's in the packet.
It's in the packet. But why is it checked, like, no, that it's, when does, when does that have to be approved that they are paid or whatever, for that?
Prior to filing the plat.
Okay.
So this, assuming this gets passed today, this will still not get filed for, you know, at least eight to ten months, depending on how long it takes to get construction in the ground. So even though it's a private road, because it's over four lots, the town will inspect the, the pavement, the drainage, the major features of the subdivision before the town accepts it, which allows the plat to be filed.
And given that we've had situations just now that required executive session, how do we ensure that the lines that are drawn in here, he's saying that the, you know, the setbacks and all these are determined by the particular builder, and we're not being revealed who the builder is and all these things. How do we not end up in the same situation as we do in some cases with other developers? Should we approve this, that we're not having, you know, I see that we're having volunteeristic spirit of meeting these two. That we're not having, you know, I see that we're having voluntaristic spirit of meeting these two acre type things that we're not going to run into the ground and and some of those concerns. What are our safeguards?
So ultimately, the since it is a private development, the developers, engineers are well always the developers, engineers responsible as the engineer of record. So they have the responsibility to ensure that they've met all the town standards or calculations as presented are correct and everything else. On the on the construction side purely, the town does a part time construction inspection. So we'll do rebar. We'll I we'll look at the major items. We do not check the grading. We do not check some of these items that are really the responsibility of the developer to build correctly. To have a full time inspector out there would be a cost that the town would not want to infer. But beginning back to the plat, there are two things that I put down here as conditions that necessarily aren't final conditions for the plat, but I wanted them in here on record and we've talked through this with David and with their engineer. There's a maintenance agreement that the town has adopted recently. We have gone back and forth where the the developer had a bunch of these into CCRs and and not fully understanding the CCRs versus the maintenance agreement versus on the plat. There's a there's a bit of a a concern from staff that the CCRs can be easily changed. So we didn't want them to go into the CCRs and be able to be manipulated too easily. So that's why item one is in here to push for it either be on the plat or to be in a maintenance agreement. And that also goes for two. There are some offsite grading that is part of the actual construction plans. So I don't think it should hold back the plat, but it's just documentation that as part of getting the construction plans approved, these two items will be addressed.
So some of the offsite draining that drainages that Chris is referring to is done in Lantana. And so we've been working with Lantana to ensure that the developer has reached out to them to make sure they have all the requirements they need as it relates to Lantana and putting water on that property. So I can tell you, I've had conversations with the person over there and he's confirmed that they're working with the developers engineer to make sure all that's done correctly without a doubt. Chris, also, when you when we look at construction plans at the end of the project, before we do final acceptance, the developer, all developers submit as built drawings to confirm that the grades are correct that were shown originally in those documents, correct?
That that's exactly right. So it it's determined as as record drawings is just the official name, but yes, that's exactly what they have to do. And any changes that are made between the construction plans and the record drawings are to be marked up and shown on the record drawings.
And this is why we don't, you know, when the developer comes in and you approve the plat, he doesn't get to go file that with the county and start selling lots. He's got to complete all the improvements and then if there's some tweaks and things that need to be made on that plat, he does it at that at that time. And then we sign the plat and then it gets recorded with the county.
Any else? Any other questions right now?
Two, I'm guessing you're doing private road because you're gating it.
Yes, the road so is X twenty five. If you see there is the road. And that will be given to the HOA and be maintained by the HOA. Yes, sir.
And then, Chris, what what was the ordinance on the thousand foot set gas well setback?
So so there's a note on the plat. It's it's hard to see this and and definitely step in if anyone needs to, but the the town can't restrict any residential lots from being close to the plat or close to the gas well. What we can do is we can require that to be noted on the plat that you're within a thousand feet of any gas wells.
Is this an awareness thing?
Yes, that's exactly right. And so that's what this reflects.
Chris, I have a question, one question on the paving section. It's on page C ten. What's our what's the town standard for paving PSI for concrete?
So the town standard is only thirty six hundred, but everyone's doing four thousand or forty five hundred on any roads. So what page was that?
It's C ten, number of ten.
Yeah, minimum thirty six hundred. Yeah. So that that's one of those remnants of an old checkbox box, but all of all of the contractors do minimum four thousand PSI.
We did four thousand in Williams Ranch.
You're you're going to do four thousand for this one too?
Yeah, most most.
It's our engineer. That's our engineer.
Yeah.
Yeah, four thousand.
Four thousand. Okay. I just want to make sure. Yeah, because I knew that was an old standard. So I just want to be sure. Any other questions from anyone? Paula?
I mean, I had the same question they had as far as answering no, but I did a good job of explaining that. When will we get the checklist updated? Because you said it's an outdated checklist. I think that would help.
Yeah, so so literally within the last month, just prior to this council, we executed an agreement, TNP did with the town to update the engineering manual and which includes this checklist. So we've started on that and and we're actually looking to do a staff meeting with some of our recommendations to what we want to update and then work actually with EMS as well to to get some insight and then we'll present that for for review.
I guess my last question would be for both Chris and Matt then if the if the checklist is outdated, then would that worry you or give you any pause that we are missing anything that would put us put us at risk or liability or that we are not doing due diligence for our town? To I mean, obviously, we could miss something somewhere. I understand that, that we would not be at a hundred percent. But that gives me pause that, you know, here we have this outdated thing and.
Right. Yeah, I understand your concerns. I, you know, I can only rely on Chris and really like the the appropriate questions when we're when we're dealing with plats, you know, you ask Chris, does this does this plat meet all of the development standards that that is representing? And and if the answer to that is yes, then the state law actually requires you to approve it.
Yeah. And and to add to that, think of the checklist as a guideline to help the developer put together his presentation. It's not our guideline for how to check it. It's not our requirement to to just go by this and say it's fine. So this is just a guideline to help them with the presentation.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, well, as you well know, these guys are they're professional engineers. They have credit.
Well, of course, this is nothing.
Yeah, no, no.
This is nothing on you. It was just more of a.
Not only just one PE, but several PEs have gone through the program and stuff. So but the details are caught. We catch them all the time. Troy caught some on them and stuff and then Mr. Siciliano fixed it. And I'm glad to see the comment about the gas well on the plat.
Yeah, we're trying to keep that. We're trying to keep that land so that when that gas well isn't productive, we control it. And then later we can come back to the town and try and do maybe two or two more lots on there. And those lots will fit on the existing infrastructure. So we've gone to all our utilities. So that well produced, I'm getting off track, but that well produced eighteen million MCF when they first produced. It's down under three now. So it's is well past its health half life. So we want to keep that and preserve it so that the homeowners know what's going to happen with that in the future. I I forgot to mention too, I got the shirt memo. I wanted to bring that out and I got the shirt memo. The polo shirt memo.
Very good. Well, the so we just want to make sure when that does happen that everybody, homeowners, any new buyers are fully aware that about what the situation was in that property the whole time. You know, so we're, you know, there's no surprises later on down the road.
Mayor, I got I got a couple of questions. David, can you kind of run us through with this new council as far as a acknowledgement letter as it relates to the gas well and when that comes into play?
Well, your current ordinance says that when somebody pulls a permit to sell a habitable structure, here's your dilemma, folks. You're trying to notify homeowners that there's a gas well on the side. The town has limited ability to do that, but they do have some tools. So one tool is we can put it on the plat. We can make a note on the plat. There's a gas well on here. And if you notice, we actually put a table on here, showed every that's not required, by the way. That's something that Troy and staff asked us to do that we did because we don't want anybody to misunderstand either. So if you look at the table at the bottom left of the plat, it shows every lot that's one at a thousand feet of a gas well. Now, a new home can be built as long as it's not within three hundred feet of a gas well, as long as the new owner is giving notice. Now, we also have a deed restriction. Your your oil and gas ordinance specifically says that anybody that conveys a habitable structure within one thousand feet of the gas well has to have a deed restriction that specifies that. So when you you talk to my attorney, who does a lot of title work, she'll tell you anybody that buys one of these houses, any lender that goes through title work is going to see that. So there's two places that we've accommodated the town that are required, the deed restriction. Plus here now for us, we don't sell lots to a homeowner. So we never convey a habitable structure. But the home builder will have to do that. And you specifically say in your ordinance what the language is and Troy has wanted to expand that language. And I've said, well, it's not me. So if you want to expand that language, he's either going to have to follow the ordinance or you're going to have to tell the home builder, he's going to have to try doing something else. But we took one more step. In our CCRs, whichever homeowner has to sign off on, we put a specific provision in there that there's a gas well on site. And we gave notice is the where that is publicly recorded. So anybody that wants to look into what the mineral lease on the gas well is can pull that up of record. So we've we've taken a lot of steps here, I think, to try and not have someone get in and say, I didn't know there was something there.
Well, we appreciate you going the extra step and we feel our town's very valuable and the citizens here in the town, the houses are very valuable. And doing the minimum is is the minimum, but we'd like to go more than that. And you've done that on this property right now where we asked for it from Troy and that's a good thing. And I think that hopefully that's a standard that future development will maintain too, to go above the minimum. Is there any other discussion from anybody on the plat approval? Okay, well, I'll take a motion, please, to approve the plat for Oni Ranch. On item number seven.
I'll make a motion that we approve the final plat for Oni Ranch per P and Z's recommendation.
I second that.
And it's been seconded. And final discussion, we'll take a vote, please, on approving the plat.
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Well, that's passed unanimously. Very good. So that is the end of the agenda items that we have so far. And it's getting late this evening. We appreciate everybody hanging around. Thank you. Next item, discussion of future agenda items. Any councilman may request an item placed on future agendas? Then they have in that they want to discuss or put on the notice the next meeting on the June twenty third? I have a couple. Okay, I have a couple items that I'd like to mention before we close up here. One is we're working on the town website and we would appreciate anybody in town that has website expertise or would like to volunteer and help us make their website much more active and accessible by the people. We could use your volunteer time. I'm going to ask our town council to take a look at ordinance fourteen A, which is a zoning ordinance. It's going to match up with one of the ordinances we're going to be working on the June twenty third meeting. And so consequently, we need to start reviewing on that and Troy, let's update that a little bit for ourselves. Of course, we mentioned the July fourth parade. Don't forget about that. It's on Friday. Fantastic. And now that Jeff has moved over to the town council, if we have any volunteers or anybody wants to do financial committee and help us out there with their expertise, we'll appreciate any volunteers that have financial background that can help the town out too. Anybody else got anything else for the meeting tonight? Thank you. And I'll take a motion to adjourn the meeting. Seconded, vote. And that's unanimous. Thank you for for coming. Appreciate it.